It is four o'clock. It is Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year to everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this work session of the Anchorage School Board to order. I believe most board members are online. Myself, Elisa Vekalas, Board Member Holloman, Board Member Donley, Board Member Mitchell, Board Member Bellamy, Board Member Marsette, and I know that Board Member Hildy is trying to find the call-in number, and she'll be joining us as well. We have Dr. Bishop and her team in Ed Center scattered around. We have three things on our agenda today. And we'll go ahead and kick it off with a back-to-school update. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And we are happy to update. We're very excited about January 19th, which is just around the corner, a couple of weeks from today. And I would like to just share an overview. All of the items that we're going to be talking about can be accessed on our website. Information about these, for those watching online, as well as access this later, that our website is a plethora of information in regard to school start and all, anything you could want to know about how the process works and whom to contact for more additional or additional information. With that being said, we are going to start with a health services update. And I am going to ask the Chief Operating Officer, Tom Roth, to introduce that section and bring the board up to date.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So I'll just start, and I'll ask Jennifer Petronas also to unmute her mic. So I'll just start by way of background. You know, our district has been engaged from the start with both the State Department of Health and Social Services and the Anchorage Health Department. Yeah, in terms of, you know, preparing and conducting a response to COVID-19 and over the months, it's really been focused a lot on testing and responding to results. But in recent weeks, you know, the district again has been doing concurrent planning, but now we're in the process of supporting what is a state municipal effort to vaccinate our community. So what we'd like to do this evening is I'm going to ask Jennifer Petronas, who is our Director of Health Services, who's really spearheaded the effort on behalf of the district to provide a brief overview first on testing and then to touch briefly on where we stand with regards to the COVID-19 vaccination. And time permitting, you know, we're certainly prepared to entertain questions. So with that, I'm going to ask Jennifer if we can move to the next slide, please. To, okay, I guess we'll talk vaccine first. I'll ask Jennifer to talk to that and then the testing system in place.
Good afternoon, everyone. The COVID vaccine is here, and we are very excited tomorrow to start vaccinating the first batch of our ASD staff, along with the remainder of our nurses that have not gotten vaccinated thus far. We are ramping up to vaccinate not only Phase 1A Tier 3, but also Phase 1B Tier 1, which includes all of our nurses, select bed staff, and those in our district that are 65 and older. We have about 1,800 appointments open right now, and about 800 of them are booked. And we'll be giving out all those vaccines plus more over the next week and a half, and we're very excited about it. The nurses are ready to move forward with this, and we're just ready to get everyone vaccinated. And COVID testing is something that we've been working on all through the month of December, trying to ramp up our capability within the district so that those that are symptomatic have the ability to get tested quickly and get those results back as quickly as possible. So we have partnered with Capstone, and they're going to be in five of our school parking lots performing walk-up testing to any staff or student. And it's going to be specifically for them so that if they need to get tested, they can get that immediate test and a result within 24 hours. And that's going to be at Chester Valley, Abbott Loop, North Star, Russian Jack, and Fairview. We've also been working with the school-based health center, and they're going to offer testing in their four locations that they've already been, which is Bartlett, Begich, Easton, Clark. And then Visit Health has been working with the Muni in doing pop-up test sites within our facilities already, and they're going to continue that in 11 of our schools throughout the month of January. And then we also have our two Abbott ID Now test machines that will mobilize. So if a nurse calls and says they need a test right away, we'll send a nurse out with that machine and get a test right then. We also have an MOA, which is not on here with Providence, and they'll offer testing in three of the schools as well, Mountain View, Muldoony, Wimmler. So starting next week, the Muni and ASD is going to ramp up capabilities within the municipality to get people that are asymptomatic tested so that they can know if they have COVID before they go back to face-to-face learning on 19th January. And with that, we have about 25 test sites within Anchorage School District where people can get tested.
So with that, Dr. Bishop, I don't know what the protocol or plan is, but we're certainly happy to entertain any questions from board members, time permitting.
I have a question, but I don't see how to raise my hand for some reason.
Would it be okay to go through? We have about just real quick updates and then have the questions at the end, and then Katie will be ready for those.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. And Deana Mitchell, I saw the same thing. I just texted Katie about it, that we don't have the raise-hand function. So we'll figure out how to play nicely in a queue here in just a few minutes, but we'll go ahead and let the team finish their side of it. So just everybody write down their questions.
I have the raise-hand function.
Oh, interesting. Okay, well, we'll have to see what we can do here. Go ahead, Dr. Bishop.
All right, thank you. And when we, we can also take the slide deck down so that all the faces of the board members are there, and we can even use the old-fashioned hand raising if we'd like, so if all of our videos are on. Okay, with that, very excited, as you know, as we moved into the new year, there was some COVID relief funding at the federal government, and Jim is going to touch on the highlights of that.
Slide, please. Good evening. As I think everyone is tracking, the President did sign the latest COVID relief bill. There's still going to be a significant amount of information coming over the next couple of weeks that provides clarity for the strings or constraints or limitations in which the funds can be used. But I wanted to provide a quick overview. So the federal government authorized a little over $54 billion for K-12. Of that, Alaska gets .29 of 1%, which is a little bit over $159 million. These funds, at least on the initial information that's coming out so far, will certainly be focused for specific needs and directions. We know we're going to get more for Federal Impact Aid above the ESER money. Title funding CITC, 21st Century, CTE, and Special Ed, other block grants. There will be some increases. It's hard to tell what would be coming to Alaska for any of those in that paragraph. The best thing about this bill, in my opinion, is that the funds are going to be used through September of 2023. So it allows the district to look at some targeted areas, CTE or ELL, Special Ed. It's really going to focus on lost learning. It can be used for a lot of instructional purposes, for targeted groups that underperformed. And so the district administration will have a lot of work to do over the next couple of weeks to come up with a general picture of how we're going to recommend how these funds will be used over the next couple of years. We should know within days how much Anchorage should get. Again, the state's getting about a little over $159 million. They're allowed to retain 10% off at the top of that, and we'll just see how that plays out. There are some other things, other highlights. There is $10 billion in childcare funding assistance that will be channeled all the way through down to local governments. So we'll be seeing how that funding comes into the community. Little over $3 billion that will go not to districts, but directly to families for internet subsidies or to the service providers for subsidies if they're giving discounts for low-income families who get internet from them. So the beauty for us is that the eligible family members only have to show that they have participated in the free and reduced lunch program to qualify for that. So we'll see how that plays out. There's an additional $2.75 billion, again nationwide, for the private schools or non-public schools. And we'll look at, as the guidance comes out, what ASD's role and/or involvement is in providing oversight and distribution of those funds. Much more to follow over the next two weeks.
Thanks, Jim. And again, much of our plan is actually already in line with the board's goals, and we'll take a look at data and student needs as we build those budgets to present to you. And during this section, we're going to just reacquaint the board with the last communication that was sent out in regard to our January 19th school start. Dr. Stock will take over.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Good evening, board. So just some high-level things. You all saw the flyer that's been circulating in the community. So there's no new information with regards to the basic structure of the back-to-school update. So I'll just hit a couple of highlights, and then we'll save questions for the end. So as you're all pretty much aware, pre-K 2, K-6, and self-contained Special Ed and Whaley School will all begin on January 19th, and they'll beginning with a five-and-a-half-hour school day. Grades 3 through 6 in the elementary will come along after that, once we're comfortable with the logistics and the procedures and all the new mitigation strategies that are being put in place. So that announcement would follow later. The middle school and high school, you're aware of the fact that we've got selected students that have struggled with grades or some other parts of attendance with online that have been selected to come in or face-to-face, and they as well. We'll start on January 19th. Just a rough ballpark. We can get into more details if you'd like during questions, but roughly a fourth or more of those students are the ones that have been selected is averaging out about that much across the middle and high schools. And then, of course, you're all aware that middle and high school students will return the beginning of the fourth quarter. So those are all in place and ready to go. Teachers at the elementary will be returning onsite on Monday, the 11th. And so at that point, then, last-minute logistics at the district level, all the planning is done. Principals have their processes for replenishing PPE all down. Procedures are all done to keep up with staffing changes and absences and any COVID outbreaks that would occur. We're all ready to go. And at this point, it's a bit of a handoff to the actual schools, who principals will be overseeing the rest of that. So we are ready to go, and we're excited about it. Lots of folks are eager to get going, see our kids' faces again. So thank you. This just, this part of the flyer that went out just shows some of the key points that we prioritized. You're all aware that we started with the elementary students first. They've had the biggest challenges with remote instruction, and so we want to get those students in there first. It does prioritize in-person school for students at the middle and high school who need the extra support. And of course, ASD Virtual remains an option for all of our grade levels, for families that are not comfortable returning at all the second semester. That is the district's option for those, and we'll see how it goes. Should be ready.
Appreciate it. And just the last two items, we wanted to just give the board a picture, mind's eye picture of just the operational needs and what's occurring in both our busing as well as in our food service. As you know, many of our, to get schools back running, there's from educators to aides, really our food service personnel as well as office personnel and bus drivers are all part of this mix. So we're very, very happy that the vaccine committee, if you will, really prioritized educators all alike to be able to support education in ASD. And so with that, just again, just we'll touch base on busing and food service, and then we will be open for questions. Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Thanks, Dr. Bishop. And if I can get the host to transfer Heather Philp and Andy Murgens over to participants for the question-and-answer period. So very, very briefly, I'll talk to student transportation again, kind of going back a bit. Our transporters have been intimately engaged from the start last March, where they were in a support role to student nutrition as we were able to feed, you know, thousands of kids across our municipality from fixed school sites. And then, as we started to return some smaller populations of students to classrooms and return to school, our busing folks were very much involved. One, and you may have heard of Stuber, where we were transporting thousands of computers to kids, many of which were receiving at their homes, but also moving kids in our core mission from their homes to school to support these small programs. So that kind of brings us up to where we are now, where we are getting ready within transportation to resume what I would, I guess, categorize as a much more traditional mission for student transportation. So right now, our staff, our drivers and our attendants are getting ready for the resumption of in-school education. And what that means for them, one is just driver certification, that they are current in all the COVID-19 protocols that we have planned for and have resourced, and now we're going to get the opportunity to implement, and then just rehearsing their routes that they're going to drive. So effective on the 19th of January is when we see ourselves getting back into this more traditional student transportation mission, specifically in that student transportation will be driving more traditional routes in their standard tiered model. And this, again, is inclusive of our elementary, to include pre-K students, middle, high school, and our special needs. So that is where we are on student transportation. Again, Ms. Philp is prepared to answer any additional questions. If I can go to the next slide, please. Thanks. So very quick, talk about student nutrition again. Here's a crew that's been working straight from end of March when we went online and have been supporting our district ever since. So kind of moving us up to where we are right now. So starting yesterday, really it was a continuation of the food support that student nutrition has been providing through a number of our schools, elementary as well as secondary, providing what we're and what are takeaway meals for our students. The only real modification that we're looking at here in this two-week period, and we'll resume what was a five-day-a-week delivery model based on feedback. We're going to have two days during the week, Tuesdays and Fridays, where students will be able to secure a number of meals that will cover them over their eligibility period for that timeframe. Starting on the 19th of January, again, kind of in the same vein as student nutrition or student transportation, we are looking in our elementary schools to resume in-school meal service for breakfast and lunch meals. We are also, we recognize that many of our students, at least initially our elementary-age students, will not be in school buildings. So we're working with elementary education specifically to ensure that we have an ability to prepare takeaway meals for those students in 3 through 6 that are entitled to receive under the National School Lunch Program. And then, as we return all elementary-age students, that will be providing the in-mail service. As far as secondary schools, again, continuation of what we have been providing, that we envision that that support will continue more in a takeaway meal model through the remainder of this academic year. And again, Andy Murgens is available to answer any specific questions on this program. So with that, Dr. Bishop, back to you.
Okay, at this time, we can really open it up. And President Vekalas, if you would like to facilitate, or I can, in regard to, you can select, and then I can request the best folks to answer the questions.
I think that for those of us that were Zoom-challenged or whatever, we have found out where our little raise-hand buttons are for the most part, but certainly if anybody has not let me know. First one up in the queue is Board Member Mitchell.
Thank you for that update, and Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody was able to get a little bit of rest and restoration, restorative energy, because it's going to be an exciting, challenging semester. I had a couple of questions. One was, Ms. Petronas had said that we have 1,800 appointments open at 800 booked. I was wondering if those are additive or if the 800 are part of the 1,800. All the testing is really wonderful to be able to offer that. I am wondering, are, you know, obviously, the people who are most at risk immediately in terms of COVID are our K through 2 teachers who are going to be in classrooms with students very soon, and the aides, and all of our bus drivers who are driving students right now. I'm wondering if they will all be able to be prioritized for vaccinations along with our 50-plus folks, because I would imagine a 50-plus person who isn't going to have children in their classroom immediately, it might not be as critical for them to get the vaccine immediately. And then the other question I had was with the ASD Virtual, I know that some of our elementary schools had come up with some really innovative ways to continue to allow families who didn't feel comfortable being in the classrooms yet before vaccinations are widely available to continue with sort of a status quo. And I'm wondering if that's going to still be an option, or it sounded like ASD Virtual is basically the only option at this point for those families.
Thank you for those questions. And Tom, if you could start with the vaccination, and then, of course, Dr. Stock, if you could follow up with what's going on with our different programs. Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Bishop. I'll do, I'll give it a hack and then ask Ms. Petronas to come police up after me. But to remember Mitchell's questions with regards to staff. So just by way of background, we did a survey of all staff. So we know who wants to take, who wants to receive the vaccine. We think those numbers will change. In fact, we're anticipating we'll get more people given some of the outcomes of the vaccine and lack of problems. So we know who wants it. We know their, you know, where they fall, their age, where they work, what their jobs are. So we are able to, based on priorities, and we do have a decremented list that is weighted towards those who are going to have, you know, more near-term contact with people and students. But I would just say, you know, we must comply, or we are compliant with the guidance that we've received down from CDC through the state. So these categories that Ms. Petronas referenced, we got to make sure that we are mindful of being compliant with that. But I think it does nest pretty well. I believe, given the number of vaccines coming in, that we'll be able to vaccinate our staff in a pretty quick and efficient manner, once those vaccines are available. Jennifer, anything you'd care to add to that?
Yep. Through the Board President to Member Mitchell, there was a question about the number of appointments available. So we, when we first opened up our appointments a few days ago, they, all of them immediately booked, all of them, plus 1,000 extra people that we were not expecting. I ended up getting more nurse volunteers than I originally planned on. So with that, we opened up a few more vaccination stations, which left us with about 1,000 extra appointments. So those are the ones we're saving for our staff that fit into either Phase 1A, Tier 3, or Phase 1B Tier 1. So we want to make sure that we prioritize our staff in the mix with all of the 800-plus community members that are already booked. So that's, we have about 1,000 appointments available right now, but even as we're speaking, they're dwindling down because people are booking them up.
So the 800 that were booked were not booked by ASD employees?
Those were community members. When we opened up to the public, when we were only allowed to vaccinate at that time, Phase 1A Tier 3, so healthcare providers, are the 800. And the additional ones that are booking are mostly ASD staff. We are fully booked tomorrow with a waitlist.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
And this is Dr. Stock, and through the President to Member Mitchell, your question about families, solutions for families who are not comfortable returning to school. I would explain it like this. We have very solid long-term options and short-term options. The challenge we have is for a parent who wants to stay home, stay in their same classroom, and stay with their same teacher, but not come to school. That's the challenge that the district has. We do not have the capacity as an entire district to have, and I'll call that, an intermediate option, someone who wants to stay out for nine weeks but wants to keep the same teacher but doesn't want to come into school. If that teacher is teaching full-time, face-to-face with their class, they don't have another option to teach both remote and onsite, unless, now, there may be individual teachers or schools that can create what I'll call one-off solutions to try to meet a need, and we certainly will encourage them and try to help them. We don't have the capacity district-wide to have every teacher in the district simultaneously teaching face-to-face and allowing live Zoom sessions at the same time, trying to engage students, half the class physically and half the class through Zoom. And that capacity doesn't exist. So what we have for a short-term solution is, and Dr. Knutson can talk a little more about it if you have further questions, but we have a Canvas course shell set up. We have videos for the entire second semester prepared that align with the district's pacing guides and materials, so that if a student is quarantined for, say, two to four weeks, but is not planning on leaving or is planning to return as soon as they're safe to, we have a short-term option there where they can keep up with videoed lessons, turn in their homework to the same teacher, keep the same grading systems, and stay connected. Now, we don't believe that to be a long-term solution. I can't perceive a place where someone would do that for a whole semester and not, you know, just simply watch a video of another teacher and turn in some homework. That's not a replacement for the ASD Virtual program, which is much more thorough. So as far as our long-term solution, that is our ASD Virtuals, our homeschool program, which we've set up, which, you know, Kathy Moffett and Mike can talk more deeply about that, but we do have an option for the homeschool families that just simply do not intend to return. So short-term options, positive; long-term options, positive. The intermediate one's a little harder. We can't support that as a district, but we, there may be individual teachers and schools that can provide some solutions around that through being innovative, and we will encourage them and try to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next up in the queue, I have Board Member Marsette.
Thank you. I have three questions, so I can either, however you want me to do it.
Go ahead and start with two for right now, because I see a lot of hands up in the queue. We'll get background if we can.
Okay. First thing I'm concerned about is, do we have any idea if any of our teachers are going to stage, I don't know if I'd call it a walkout or just not show up. I'm seeing this in many other states, basically Arizona here, and just wondering if we have any idea, or are we prepared for any such contingency?
That's a great question. We have not heard that, of course. We've been working closely with our principals and our teachers in our schools. The reason for our phased-in approach is to be able to staff the classrooms appropriately, and we believe we can do so. There is quite a bit of excitement even from teachers to come back and see kids in classrooms. And again, unless it's something on social media and I haven't caught it, that has not been communicated to us. And we would hope that that would not happen.
Well, so would I. The other thing is, you know, I've been very open about my concerns with feeding our kids that are not returning to school, our third to sixth graders. And I guess I'm wondering, and I know that when we went after the summer, it became more difficult for parents to sign up for those meals and get it. And I know that I've visited several schools that said that they saw a big drop in the number of students that were picking up meals, and they really felt it was due to the way they needed to sign up. And I know we were addressing some of that. And I guess when we say we're working on it, can I get an idea of what that means and what we're looking at? Or, I mean, is it going to be possible? Or, I mean, I mean, working on can I get an idea of what that means or what we're looking at? Or, I mean, is it going to be possible? Or, I mean, I mean, working on it's one thing. I understand that, but maybe just give me a little bit more information.
To Member Marsette's question, I guess, I guess I need to understand a little better and, and, and I regret. I'm not, I'm not quite understanding with regards to, to, to the question. I, I think what it comes down to, if I might just offer, you know, the, the, the challenge that student nutrition has, it's, it's frankly, it's, it's designed, it's resourced, it's staffed to feed meals to students in, in school buildings. There, there is no surplus. In fact, in fact, student nutrition is down about thirty-five staff members. They just, they can't fill the authorizations. So I think by working on it, what, what we are reaching out to in our elementary schools is to get our school-based staff to assist while our one, maybe two cafe managers are, are preparing and distributing meals for students that are at the school. They need help. They need physical help, people who can actually package takeaway meals and then distribute those to the families that come to get them. So it's not, I guess the work is trying to verify, you know, through our schools that we have those staff members who are committed that we can train to do that additional function that student nutrition just is not resourced to, to do internally.
Yeah. And, and I'll add to that, that we really, you know, when the pandemic hit, we expanded, we did everything we could because we wanted to keep people employed. And we, we generally had three people and even bus drivers who weren't driving helping at the school. Well, now that the bus is up and running and we, we're not, and all the schools are being opened at the elementary level, so those cafe managers aren't working in pods anymore, they're spread out. So they need to take care of the kids in their school. We have provided the lunches at alternate sites. And again, that troubleshooting is school by school to say which of your parents can't drive to go pick up those meals because they're absolutely going to be fed. It's just that if, just in a different location, they have to pick them up. Also, the registration for the computer program, we've worked to get parents registered. You know, know how to order the food in advance, so it'll be there for them. So just lots of different things, but we're really trying to solve systematically. We know we can feed at our schools and we're just trying to solve those individual problems about individual families that truly have walked to go pick up schools at their, you know, lunches at their school. The majority of families drive anyway, so we're just, you know, directing to drive to a different location in secondary schools where those lunches can be made and packaged. So really it's, it's troubleshooting all the way down to, we need help packing here, we need help picking up here to be able to, to meet those needs and, and they look different at different schools depending on what the principals are finding out about the individual families that are really struggling with this.
Is, is there some, we talk a lot about our community helping. Is there any way to look for volunteers that might be willing to help us pack up these lunches?
Schools are working on that right now.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. And I'll save my last question.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
Continuing with the, thank you and Happy New Year, everybody. Just, I'm, I'm struggling to understand. No, I'm not struggling to understand. I, I am concerned with the food, with food service. Getting it to the people who need it, even in our alternative schools. You know, that we have families that don't have transportation. So am I correct in my understanding that each elementary school will have a meal program where families can access meals? That's my first question. My second question is what, what is the plan for alternative sites? Sites that are, this pandemic has hit, has just exposed so many inequities. Food is by far for our kids, one of the biggest. And I'm just trying to figure out how are we servicing and what do we need to do to service all kids, all families who need the food? So I know we have middle school, high school, elementary sites. I don't know if, I don't think it's all of them, but several of them. But what about those students who are in alternative schools?
If I might, to, to Member Bellamy's question, and, and I'll ask Andy, Andy to, to come in on this too. So, so in, in short, we're, we're really only able to, to service students who are enrolled in schools that have food service programs under the National School Lunch Program. And, and the unfortunate truth, Member Bellamy, is that those students that are in alternative programs that don't have a meal by law are not entitled to receive food support through the Anchorage School District. Now, again, it's not to say if a student shows up and says, I'm, I'm, I'm hungry, I want a meal. You know, our policy is to feed those students, but we don't have programs in, in all our alternative schools and, and most of our charter schools, frankly, with the exception of, of the ANCCS. So that, that is a constraint with, with regards to the other schools insofar as they have a national school lunch program, then yes, you are corrected that we are, we are providing food service to students throughout the community in, in the elementary schools primarily and then, and then selected secondary schools. Again, it's, a lot of it is, is constrained by staffing. So Andy's, is there anything that, that I'm missing on this that, that you can add to?
Yeah, I'll just add in that I think one of the things that's important to realize that at charter schools in particular, so there are a number of alternative schools that have meal programs. ANCC, you mentioned. Whaley, Benson, some of those, some of those places have a school lunch or have a school meal program. Most of the program, most of the schools that don't have a meal program are charter schools. And, and they're constrained by either A, they simply don't have the facility within the building to, to actually facilitate making a meal or serving a meal. Nor do I have a, a catering capability to take meals to them and serve them. So some of that is just, it's a physical impossibility for them to serve a meal. And then some of it is by choice. They elected not to have a meal service. Rilke Shula is an example. At one point in time, Rilke Shula did have a meal service program. However, they elected to discontinue it. King Tech High School is another example because of their culinary arts program. If they were to have a national school lunch program at King Tech High, by regulation, the culinary arts program would have to be, would have to fall under the same nutritional requirements that the National School Lunch Program does. And that kind of hampers their ability to, to do their culinary arts program. So they chose not to have a program. So in, in those instances, I, I just, I simply can't provide any service to those locations.
And I, and I, I appreciate that.
Dr. Johnson can speak specifically to high school alternative schools if you'd like.
Okay. I, I, Mike, I still, my concern is, is that we, we, we have parents, we have families that are stuck in a system that is, that is pre-COVID. It's all predetermined who gets what. And if a student from Fairview attends, for instance, one, a stellar or somewhere else, they have to go without food because it, it was, we, before COVID, they, it was understood. And now that we're in COVID, those families are suffering just as much as other families. And so I, I just, maybe Star's suggestion of partnering in some way. But I think we just need to not just focus on what people are qualified to get or what we are legally allowed. I mean, being legally allowed to feed people is just crazy to me, but I get it. I get it. That's the system. I, I just think that food is very important. It's very limited. Families are hungry. And we can't just, we can't just constrain ourselves to doing what, what, what's just legally acceptable. Partners.
Yeah, I understand. And we do partner with, you know, our different community feeding programs that feed kids and children's lunchbox. But I, I want to let you know that we believe that too. We are already in the first semester, seven million dollars overspent
I know.
on food service. So, so we are reaching out, we are moving beyond our capabilities to assist with that. And when, you know, it, it's just trying to, to solve those problems and assisting communities, but we can't do it all. And so that's when we do, as Member Marsette said, seek partners because really our system was set up for school feeding. And now that we're having school, that's a good thing. And we'll continue to feed the students. It's just that we're, we're struggling with our, number one, our personnel to be able to do two jobs. It really is kind of related back to the, the instructional one that Member Mitchell had. For teachers to teach while they're face-to-face and be expected to do an online at the same time, our, our people are just taxed and they've done so well, so well already. So we're just looking for solutions to the individual, you know, things that are occurring with the inconvenience of half of our school going back and half not, where they have to go to an alternate site to pick it up. But we're doing the best we can. I mean, honestly, upwards of seven million dollars additional spending on food this year in the deficit.
And, and the question's not to say we're not doing enough. The question is to my questions is hopefully having us think outside of the box. Do we need a waiver from the government? I don't know. I, I don't know what our options are.
Yeah.
But I know families are hungry.
Yeah, and I love the
They just
Statement.
We got to feed them.
Yeah, the statement of thinking outside the box is exactly what we're doing individually at schools to try to solve the problems for the ones and the families that expressed to us that they just can't do what the process is. So then we're, we're problem-solving at that school level, at the student level, at the family level. And Kirsten, what is occurring at the secondary schools?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through the President to Member Bellamy, I just wanted to add, and this may put your mind at ease a little bit. You know, the, the official student nutrition rules are, are one thing. That's one way we get food service to kids. In our alternative programs, often we work with our Children in Transitions program as well. And there's a lot of kids that we connect to resources, food being one of them through that program as well. So there's a lot of kids being served that way and in an alternate fashion than through our, our traditional student nutrition department. And then additionally, it's, especially schools like Avail and Benson and Save in particular. Both schools have separate grants where they keep snacks and things like that at school for kids so that if, you know, if they can't get a traditional student nutrition lunch, that there's other forms of, of nutrition for them that, that they can get there at school. So there are some stopgaps. It's not perfect, but, but we are doing some other things in addition to just the traditional student nutrition options.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Holloman.
Thank you. And yes, I've got a pair of questions. I may be asking Dr. Stock to rephrase slightly, but I do want to just make sure for families that don't want their children to return, do we see having a distance option through the end of the school year?
The long-term option is just the ASD virtual, except for in schools where they may have additional staffing or capacity or technology. What I, what I'm trying to explain is we don't have a, a capacity for what I would call a district-supported school-wide option through every school in the district to be able to provide both face-to-face, individual teacher remote and ASD virtual, all of those things. And, and we don't have that capacity. There will be individual teachers and school sites that are able to cobble together what they have to, to create options where it's just that to expect every teacher in ASD to be able to to do full Zoom teaching with one-third of their staff while they have two-thirds, or I'm sorry, one-third of their students. While they have two-thirds of their students physically face-to-face trying to manage them and get them to lunches and do all the things they do is just a very, very heavy lift. It's not a district expect. In fact, I would say that with various AEA leadership, that was a concern of theirs from the beginning is that we were going to ask them to do that. Because that would be a very, very heavy lift for a teacher. And there was concerns from AEA expressed to me that, that that would be a, a very heavy lift for our teachers who have already lifted so many different new skills this year, but that'd be a real juggling act. And, and on top of that, Member Holloman, we don't have the bandwidth. We don't have the webcams. We don't have all the tools to do that on, on a, a level that would be quality. And what I would say is that if a teacher had to do that in every classroom, it would reduce the quality of the face-to-face that one of those is going to suffer a lot. And I, I feel like if face-to-face is going to be our priority, parents do have options. It's just an option that is not really comfortable for them. Now, if I'm one of those parents, I would recommend that, that, you know, we do have, if they don't come to school for a couple of weeks, they will still have access to the Canvas course shells. They'll still have that teacher's on their roll. They'll still be on that teacher's class list, just like if they were quarantined. And they can work at that for a few weeks to see how it goes while they see how face-to-face is going, but and it's not a perfect thing. It's just not a perfect fit.
Sure. And then I'm thinking more in terms of a parent that's not going back and forth, that simply has a decision, I'm not ready for my kid to be back to in-person yet. So they wouldn't necessarily be part of the neighborhood school. Would the district have an option to say, okay, if, if that's your feeling, here's where you'll be? Will that be an option for parents through the end of the school year?
I would say we
ASD, sorry, it's ASD virtual. And we hope that it's not only this year, but moving into the future if parents choose that, that that would be an option for them. Yeah.
But that's, I think, the, the answer directly to the question I've got. My second one, I actually would leave directly to Dr. Bishop. In announcing all these plans, I, I'm assuming they are contingent on what happens in the future. Right now, I think there's an awful lot of optimism. The numbers in Anchorage are really encouraging. And the vaccine is in the offing. But let's assume for a moment that things go horribly wrong. I assume that, that we might step away from any of this depending on situations in the community that we hope don't occur, but I, I would just like to verify these aren't cast in stone, I assume.
That's a great question. And I, short of an emergency, of course, we would abide by any kind of emergency ordinance that the city has. You know, we would follow along with their guidance at the state level as well. If, if there's something that happened at the state level that wouldn't allow us to have school. But short of an emergency ordinance that disallows, you know, schools to function and daycares and things like that, then I, I believe we are moving forward on the nineteenth. So the answer is yes, but I, I believe that we're moving in the right direction, like you said, with our case numbers.
I guess there's a follow-up to that. If we saw sudden rises in community cases, if we saw the same near capacity of the health system, if we recognize that we were having in-school transmission, I assume we would step back from what we're doing is, is what I'm asking. And of course, I'm, I'm hoping none of those things occur.
You know, our plans are to operate schools safely. And so we, we will most likely be making calls similar to how we did with sports as well as with some of our, our tutoring that went on, that there's a, a possibility that a team or a classroom or, you know, a, a teacher and some kids that we would have a, a closure at that time. So those safety protocols and notifications and contingency plans are all built in to the school start plan.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. So I saw that sixty-five and older get the vaccine, so that's exciting. But my question is about the, the testing side. So I just want to be clear on what I should be sharing with our community. If people are asymptomatic, do we have the capacity, like I should be saying, go get tested once a week? Like, is that, is that something that, like, is that the position of the health department? What should we be communicating to the public on how regularly they should get tested if they have asymptomatic? Because I think a lot of people are afraid of straining that system. And if it's not a concern, then I want to make sure everybody, you know, knows that, I guess. So just maybe some clarification on what we should be sharing.
Jen Petronas and Tom Roth, can you respond to that? That's a great question. And, but the good news is, is the, the city would actually like that to happen, asymptomatic testing for And uh but um the good news is is the the city would actually like that to happen, asymptomatic testing for surveillance reasons. Uh and then we're covering the symptomatic and and Tom and and Jen can add to that.
Sure. And in fact, I'm I'm going to ask Jennifer to to talk to that question because she's much more intimate with the uh the the. Guidance coming out from the state and the municipality.
Through the Board President to Member Hildy. So the sites that are set up in our school parking lots um from Capstone is specifically for symptomatic testing. Um but it's just for ASD staff and students so they can get through quickly. The visit help sites that are rotating and pop up, um those are for anyone that wants to get tested in the community, both asymptomatic. Or um symptomatic. And then any of the other community sites that are um funded by the Muni are available for both types of testing. Anybody can get tested for any reason. Um the Muni is encouraging teachers and students to get tested at least a week before returning to face-to-face learning. But it's not a requirement. They would love if they did. Um and then they can continue to get tested every week or however they feel comfortable afterwards at one of the already established Muni sites.
And I I might add just a a fun little tidbit. Uh the uh testing that we do and um to use Jen's words and one of our nurses. Uh just so that our parents and to communicate out, uh it is not the really invasive testing. That seems to be um going the swab up to your brain almost. It's uh Jen uses the term in her nurses with our families that it's it's really um the swab that we do is no. No deeper than a a child picking his or her nose. And so it's really some of our parents uh sharing that with them. They understand, oh, it's you know, that they they understand that there's not going to be problems with. Uh you know, going to the nurse and getting tested or any of these sites being tested with the asymptomatic. Um that that the uh it's actually the easier kind of test. Did I get that right, Jen?
Thank you. Um so I see that Board Member Bellamy has her hand raised, but it's four fifty-two. I know that we're going to be able to have a chance to ask some more questions at the non-action item as well. We can always pull that and ask more questions. Um and we do have um two other things, but you know, one for certain, the Legislative Priorities Event. Um is listed on our work session agenda, so I wanted to give a few minutes of space for that. Um and so Ms. Margot, you have put a lot into um working on getting that um kind of planned and put together. And if I was wondering if you would just take a few minutes and just um kind of either update the board or just let us people know that. Um you know, where things are kind of at and just the reminder of when it is. That'd be wonderful.
Sure, I'm happy to. So um we sent today, we sent out, well, actually yesterday, we sent out of the uh proof. Of our flyer and we did hear back from board members and we've incorporated those, your edits and your comments. Into the final document. So um it's Friday, the the event is this Friday. And I will be contacting um several of you who are interested in uh uh you know, assisting with the presentation. Uh for instance, Star, we'd like for you to just give an overview of our goals, that process. Um and then we have uh well, I'll have a a better list tomorrow when we meet, when the committee meets again. But we are all set. Uh Alan and his team did an excellent job. Uh Kathy Moffett and uh Katie are right on it with all of the detail in the organization. Uh the superintendent has given um given her uh input and guidance. And I think we have an excellent, excellent plan, uh a pri- a set of priorities. And uh looking forward to Friday. It'll it'll start at one. We go from one to two thirty. And from one to one to one fifteen is kind of our greeting welcoming. Um a session and then we'll have a presentation, a chunk of time for presentation. Which would consist of highlights, district highlights, good news, school start. And probably a a overview of graduation rates or something, whatever the superintendent, it's her. That's her time to shine, so whatever she would like to do. And then at the end, we will have Q and A. Uh one of the things we are going to work in at the very beginning is allowing uh each of our uh guests to introduce themselves. And of course, uh we will introduce ourselves as well, or at least the President will introduce the board members who are present. So what did I miss, Katie? Dr. Bishop, what did I miss? Uh Kathy, if you're on, did I miss something?
I think you hit it well.
Okay. So we're trying it, guys. Um and if you have uh other uh comments, questions, um keep them to yourself. No, I'm joking. There's still time, but we are ready to go and we're sending out, uh Katie is going to send out. Uh we have seventeen uh that have uh responded. We're working on another seven, uh I think eighteen. Um uh people that we have not heard from. Uh so we are uh we're set to send out one more um email with the zoom with the link. And with some attached documents, which one of which will be uh two, one of which will be the back-to-school plan. The other will be our actual legislative uh priorities flyer. So um the uh those hands up for legislative stuff? Okay.
I don't know. I'm going to give each one thirty seconds uh because it's four fifty-six. So um Star, from uh Member Marsette.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with leaving the restorative justice on there. Because even though Garantar has worked very hard on this, she is working up uh putting together legislation on making it a a mandate. And as we all know, any unfunded mandate, and this is not a cheap thing to do. So I'm look, I'm real concerned about including that on our legislative priorities. I think we can do something in the House because we do that, that says that we support her her um mandate that she's proposing.
Hmm, okay, it I just uh I don't know that it can't the the it made it on its list because of Representative Tar. It made it on our list because we're already doing that work. I mean, we have youth school, high school. So if we get the money, we'll be able to expand. If we don't, then we're we're going to still do what we do, what we've been doing. And it has to be part of our future. It's for me. So but I I hear you.
Yeah, we just need to be careful.
I hear you. So um yeah, thank you, Star. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Ma- uh Member Hildy.
I'll be very quick. Um if there's somebody who hasn't responded that you'd like us to reach out to personally, you know, everybody gets a lot of emails. Please just give me some names and I can um and then the other one, I haven't been able, I haven't been able to open the legislative priorities yet. So I was surprised when Star sent an email about restorative justice. Is that part of what we had talked about before? Because I didn't remember that being on there before. Or is it something something else or is it a newer?
No, it's not. We haven't changed, we haven't changed anything from the date, the input that we gave uh to Alan. That so that was part of that input that we gave to Alan. And um I you remember, we had the grid.
Okay, I'll try to read it open. I'm just judging.
Yeah. So uh no, it's not, it's not new. I mean, if we didn't make it up at the last minute because we we it's based on our last meeting in December. When we all brainstormed.
Next up, uh Board Member Mitchell.
Okay, I'll try to make this quick also. And I, the first thing I was going to say is exactly what Member Hildy said. If if you want to send a list of eighteen who haven't responded out yet, we can, you know, say we've got relationships and we can call people. Um the other question I have for, and this is a totally new topic and it it probably. When when our students come back, there's going to be a lot of SEL issues that we're they're dealing with. Um and I know that we're trying to catch them up academically, but I know that we also need to really give them space to. Deal with the last, you know, ten months of of what they've had going on. Um one of the things that somebody just raised to me is that our students and granted, our secondary aren't coming back right away. But we are not allowed to connect students with mental health providers unless we have permission from the parents. Um if the student is under eighteen years of age. And I my understanding is that there are many other states where that age is significantly younger. So it's maybe twelve, maybe fourteen for obvious reasons. Um so I'm just wondering if this is coming out of left field and it's the eleven and a half hour. But is that something we might want to consider um adding to our legislative priorities?
It's there already. Uh well, you mean the age limit or just the mental health?
No, the the issue with the age.
Oh. Uh yeah, um no, that's not, there's nothing there for the relative to age.
I I can share the history of that. I and um Member Holloman, you might remember as well, I was. A principal at the time of an elementary school, so it could have been maybe two thousand six-ish. Uh there was legislation, a statute passed, and it was really in relation to uh medical providers or trained people. Being able to make those recommendations. And it that wasn't necessarily around mental health. It was really around. Uh educators discussing um ADHD and um attention deficit disorder and medications. With um and so it came from a a group that went to the legislature on that part. And it became uh law uh that uh if schools were to discuss uh any type of. Um uh medical or mental health uh state um coming from teachers and untrained in that area. Um that they that they shouldn't be um pushing or asking kids and parents to go in a way. That it really should be supervised by or uh you know, approved by your school nurse. So they came out with flyers and things of of like different resources that then nurses could give to parents. But do you recall that time? Uh uh Member Holloman, it it was about two thousand six, seven. And and it was a a pretty uh big deal if you could, if you remember at the time. Uh where we really had to retrain and and everybody in our schools. That um that any kind of medical diagnosy or any kind of mental health thing really should come. Uh out of that nurse's office or a school psychologist or someone that was trained in that area. So it's actually a a statute.
So does that mean then that the nurse or the school psychologist could give a student a list of resources? Or does that mean they have to go through the parents?
Uh it is, I believe, with with parents. I'd I'd have to double-check on that. But um we share with students quite a bit, resources, nurses, they they do have more uh availability. So I'll double-check on that, but but that was the the core of the conversation at the time that when that law changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um next up, real quickly, uh Member Donley, and then we need to transition to executive session.
I just wanted to quickly say that I support the parents being notified before that would happen. I support parent involvement in that kind of uh mental health uh ex uh assistance to our children, our students.
Thank you. Um it is five oh three. Uh we got through our two items uh on our agenda. Um always room for more conversation, uh but we do have an executive session. And if we can get a motion to move into that, that would be wonderful.
I move that we uh move, I move that we, are we there? Oh, go into executive session to discuss uh the items on that agenda. Do I have to say what they are?
Yes.
Um student, um what is it? Student?
Uncontested student hearing.
Uncontested student.
Hearings.
Hearings and um I don't have it in front of me.
No, and that's it right there. So I just need a second. Thank you. So we are now out of our work session into executive session. Um Katie, just real quick, are we staying on this Zoom link or are we going into a different Zoom link?
Different.
Um it'll be a different Zoom link.
Okay, all right, then we'll see um board members here in the next few minutes. Thank you, everybody.